All right.
Today, we're all here for our finalists interviews for the HRA Executive Director position. I'm Ann Sullivan, one of the Cook County Commissioners. We're going to go around and introduce ourselves and we'll start with Commissioner Gamble.
And Commissioner Gary Gamble, Second District, coming in.
Yes.
I'm Phil Hanson.
Welcome, Brad Murray, and I'm Commissioner on the HRA.
And Chris O'Brien, I'm Commissioner on the HRA.
Phil Gable, I'm currently Chair of the HRA Board.
Richard Olson, head of the HRA.
Okay. And we'd like to point out also that Commissioner Gamble is the County Board's representative to the HRA and Commissioner Sullivan is the alternate county board member, so that's why they're here. And, you know, yeah, and we have one other person, at least, actually a couple.
Yeah.
Ann? I'm Allison Plummer, HRA Director with Cook County.
Nice to meet you, finally.
Well, now that we've had our introductions, we'd like you, Jeff Brand, to introduce yourself not only to all of us, but to our community, so give us a little bit of information about your background and experience.
You bet. Glad to. Hello, everyone. My name is Jeff Brand. I, until about a week and a half ago, was a state representative, District 18A down in southern Minnesota, Mankato, St. Peter area. I spent 43 years coming and going from Cook County, all the way from as a baby to an adult. I'm always visiting up here. I love it up here. The only other time I've actually worn a suit up here is when I got married by Artist Point, years ago, and, and so, you know, it was kind of exciting to come back here today and not be dressed as if I'm going camping, so. A little bit more about myself. I've spent 17 years in and out of the housing industry in the area. I was a Realtor for over 10 years down in, in Kato. I worked for Midwest Realty. After that, I was a city council member. I had a business, a small business, that we just closed up a couple of years ago, but we had about a 13-year run, which was a lot of fun. We did native plant restorations, ecological monitoring, that sort of thing. A lot of folks want rain gardens, but unfortunately, there's not a lot of people to install them, and so I was happy to fill that void. And so I was happy to fill that void and make that my business for a while. And then also, you know, I was a City Council member in St. Peter for eight years. And then I grew my wings and decided to run for State Representative and was successful there as well. And I'm a husband, I'm a father, outdoors enthusiast. That's a little bit about me.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
We'll turn things back over to Chair Gable.
Jeff, what, the first question is, what goals would you set for yourself to accomplish in the first three months of the job? Or the first six months, or by the end of the first year?
That's a really good question. I think in order to be successful at this job, it's going to be a lot of networking. A lot of networking with a lot of leaders, a lot of civic engagement, a lot of people in the community. People who are interested in housing, people who in need for housing. People who have housing that they want to find more people to fill those vacancies. I think that's going to be really important. Also, I think it's really important, as we talk about the shared goals that we have for the future in the first six months or year, is to find the funding that we're going to need for projects. Like, you provided me with a homework opportunity, and I filled that, filled that out, I hope, to your satisfaction. And at that point, what I was really looking for is different opportunities to find funding for those, for those projects that are coming into the community. Some major players that really want to build housing in the community, but are having a hard time closing that gap in the funding. Housing costs more money than it ever has, and probably will continue to in the future. And as we start looking at the needs of the community and the county, we really want to make sure that we've got opportunities for people who need a house to get the house that they, that they need. We have, in this particular county I'm aware of, the fact that we have workforce shortage, and that's challenged maybe a little bit by childcare. But also, if they can't have a house in the county, it's really hard to fill that job. And so I think it's really important that we start addressing that in the first year. And I would really look to start, I know you guys have a plan of by 2026, over two hundred new, new units. I gotta say, you guys have been on, on task on trying to chip away at that number. And I'm seeing in the community, new startups, new homes, and things like that. We've got to keep that ball rolling forward. We've got to keep moving forward on that. So that will be in the first year. We're going to continue down that road of continuity. Yeah.
Jeff, when, thank you for the response. When you're thinking about, or when you're mentioning, you know, getting, trying to secure those resources to exactly, said, build the housing that we want and need. Any idea, like, is there any specific sort of budget you would go after or program you think would be good for the county?
Well, when I look at housing, I look at the opportunities we have for people to build starter homes. Affordability is really important. Rentals as well, new rentals. I see that the Birchwood Apartments is undergoing some renovations in the community right now. And that's going to create better opportunities for people to have more suitable housing. But we've got to continue to look at that mix between rental and housing that's affordable to purchase. And then also, the next step of housing as well. I realize in this county, in particular, it's a really nice place to stay, right? But it's also a really nice place to live. You've got that challenge between the vacation rental by owner community, and you've got the, the housing stock that you have now. I want to kind of work with them to ease that, so there's not so much contention in the community. But again, that we're meeting the needs of the community where they are for the workforce of tomorrow. Yep.
Thanks.
Move on. Jeff, can you please provide an example of a time you had to assemble a team of partners to address an organization or a community need? You know, just how did you go about it? What was the outcome? What worked well? And what would you have done differently?
When I was at the Legislature, one of the immediate needs that I had for my community was to secure, to secure funding successfully between the state and federal dollars to complete Highway fourteen from Nicollet to New Ulm. A lot of people have died on that stretch of highway. It's about a twelve-mile stretch. And we were never able to find that funding until I was elected and we were able to get this accomplished. We were able to secure fifty million dollars, and it took a blitz of working with County Commissioners and City Council members and mayors all along that corridor to secure some funding. We had to secure a match from Nicollet County in order to help pay for some of that cost. We worked with the Legislature. I actually worked, at the time, was Margaret Anderson Kellerher. She was previously the Speaker of the House, but at the point where I was at the Legislature, she was the Transportation Commissioner. And we actually had to go back with a fine-tooth comb back to, like, two thousand and twelve session law to find that opportunity that existed. Basically, what the State Legislature, in bipartisan, bipartisan way, has said, "Hey, Commissioner Transportation, we're going to allow you to go after federal dollars to pay for some road construction, wherever it is. Just try to find some federal funding, would you?" And in that span between 2012 and 2019, it had never been done. And so we had that. We were able to amend existing, existing session law to go after some federal dollars for rural communities across the country. And we were one of the very few that were actually successfully able to get some funding. We ended up getting thirty-six million dollars. But we had to pass legislation in order for that to happen. So it just happened to be that the governor was from Highway, Highway fourteen territory, represented the first congressional district. It just happened to be that Margaret Anderson Kellerher lost a loved one on that stretch of highway. And the governor had lost a neighbor, so they were all on board. They knew exactly what the issue was. Were able to get the, the funding secured right as COVID started hitting Minnesota. And so in twenty nineteen, in 2020, we were able to get that successful funding. And it, like I said, it took an all-out blitz. Media, we had to work on a media campaign. We had to work to get letters of support. We had over a hundred letters of support for the federal ask for those dollars. And so that was really important.
Is there any partnership examples or things that you tried that didn't work?
Well, in the heat of, the heat of it all, you try to do everything you can, right? And sometimes, some people were just not able to handle more of a task, like City Council members or some of the, some of the mayors were just like, they, they had other things that they were focusing on, that sort of thing. At the Legislature, it was, in the, in the Legislature, let's see here, it passed sixty-six to zero in the Senate. And I had nineteen colleagues in the House on my side of the aisle who didn't vote for the bill because they didn't have the comfortable way of saying, "Let's do this," knowing that COVID was right on our doorstep. You have to keep in mind, this was exactly the same week that a lot of us as legislators stopped taking meetings with constituents. And that was really hard for us, because we all love to talk to people. We want to know what's going on in our communities and stuff like that, and people like to come up and visit with us. But on this particular issue, it was, it was really kind of a, should we wait and spend that money on the COVID response? What should we do? And so, yeah, I would have loved to have seen everybody vote for it, but sometimes that's the way it goes. But it was still successful. And now it's four lanes. We haven't had a fatality since. We used to have head-on collisions. We used to have semis crashing into people. Very icy conditions, roads that were covered in snow and ice. And now, because it's easier to maintain, there's less blowing snow, we've had a lot safer highway being built. Yep.
My turn for a question. Please describe your experiences working with broadcast media to educate the public and build public support for projects for our mission.
That's a good one. I'm going to go back to my experience at the Legislature for a minute. In 2023, I took on a very big task at the Legislature, and it was banning forever chemicals. Known as PFAS, they're in the air, they're in the water, they're actually in our bodies right now. You probably don't even know where they came from, because there are a lot of materials that we buy every day at a grocery store or at a regular store that have them, where we're being exposed to them. Nobody really knows about that. When I first introduced this legislation, it was because I built a coalition of people to work on that legislation across the board. Folks that were interested in, in having healthier, cleaner environment, people that were healthy, working towards reducing chemicals in our bodies. I worked with fire departments, because if a house burns, all that stuff burns with it. They were getting inadvertently exposed to these toxic chemicals in the air when they were working. And the filtration devices weren't actually taking that poison out of the air. And so I worked with Fox Nine, I worked with KSTP in the Twin Cities, I worked with WCCO, CARE-11. All the major news outlets were actually reporting on the story. I wanted to make sure they got all the press releases that we're putting out as we were following the story. Also, Star Tribune, Minnesota Reformer, all of the major media resources across the state were really engaged in this process from beginning to end. And so we did TV interviews, we did interviews when we were at the, at the Legislature by phone, local media as well. It was really kind of an awesome situation. I didn't think that we would ever get it to be that big. The, the most interesting, when we're talking about media, is a Japanese news outlet that actually interviewed me after we passed the legislation, because they were also interested in, in the effects of what was going on in Japan as well. And so that was really cool to talk to Jonathan May over in, in Tokyo, Japan, by Zoom, no less, from my favorite coffee shop in town. And it was an opportunity that definitely was important, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure people are aware of what's going on. Transparency is really important. And I gotta say, I'm going to give Jason a lot of credit, because you've done a lot locally. And when I applied for this job, that was one of the first resources I found very helpful to me, was what's going on in the local community. There's another story by Jason Hale, talking about what was going on, WTIP, Northland News Now, places like that, were really good opportunities. That's what the people that are paying the taxes want to know, is what's going on? How are things getting better? Employers want to know. The local hospital administrator wants to know, the sheriff wants to know. Even Almanac, a couple of times you were on Almanac as well. That's some good exposure as well. Good opportunities for me, as a guy that's running for this position, to really learn more about what's going on. But also, it's not just me, again, it's the taxpayers, it's the employers, it's all the important people, employers in the community. You bet.
So, here's the question. What would colleagues say they liked most about working with you? And what would they say is the most challenging part of your experience?
Yeah. Those are good questions. You know, you don't like to talk too much about myself when it comes to, like, good versus bad, but these are good questions you should know. And so when I was thinking about this, this is one that took the most time for me to think about and write down a response. I pride myself in my integrity. People realize that. The honesty that I have, and I, what I do, my voice carries weight. And I want to make sure that I'm saying the right thing at the, you know, when it matters and counts the most, because people do rely on me as a local leader to provide them with the right answer, right? What I would say also is that I'm really always interested in stepping in when possible. People have said, "Thanks for stepping in. I didn't expect you to do that, but when you did, it made my life easier." To the challenges, I think that my biggest challenge, I would say, and I'm getting better at this now, is if somebody isn't direct about what needs they have, they sometimes miss some of the cues. So I'm doing better at asking, "How are you doing? What do you need? Where, where can I help?" and that sort of thing as well. So that's what I would say would be my most positive attributes and my challenge. You bet.
Please tell us about a time when there was a challenge or conflict with components, partners, finances, or the public in a project? And how did you find resolutions, and what lessons did you learn from the experience?
To answer this question, I go back to about this time last year, when I was in a room just this size with a bunch of teachers. It was on the heels of the 2023 legislative session. I thought we did a great job. Not the best job, but a great job of doing things with that money to make a difference in people's lives. Unfortunately, when you're talking about teachers and retirement, that money that we had available and how we spent the money didn't go far enough when it came to teachers and teacher retirement and that sort of thing. And they let me know, they let my senator know, and they let my B-side district representative also know, we were all in the same room together. They let us know that we still needed to work, and we can't just rest on our laurels of providing the $2 billion that we provided into the retirement fund. What it really did, it was shaved off about half a year for the required service before they could access their retirement. And so if people are working to about sixty-seven years old before they can reach retirement, really weren't very happy about having to be in the classroom until sixty-seven. And I understand that. You know, gosh, you know, you're in a room full of, a school full of, a room full of kids in a class, and the class size keeps getting bigger, and we keep asking teachers to do more. Yeah, that is a kind of a tough situation sometimes for those teachers. And they're part of a union, and they're always represented at the Capitol as well. But I think at the end of the day, we have to decide where, where the money was supposed to go. And so firefighters are also asking for help. You've got people that work in regional treatment centers across our state. They're also looking for some additional resources for their retirements in the future. And so it's kind of a mixed balance of how do you, how do you spend that money? Now, when I say, you know, things are great at the Legislature, but not the best, I say it's really difficult for us, you know, to come as a body of about two-hundred-and-one people, plus our governor, to really make everything go, no matter how many resources we have. We're always going to have somebody that's unhappy, right? So at the end of the day, it's, it's dealing with that and not internalizing that so much, realizing they're frustrated in the classroom. But, you know, at the end of the day, they're not mad, per se, at us because we didn't do our job right. It's just that they don't feel like they're being represented. And so at the end of the day, you know, the Legislature's in the future, going to have to tackle that, that problem. And that's a problem that's kind of festered since, I would say, you know, the Great Recession in 2010, when we started to have to pull back stuff in government. I don't know up here how things worked, but where I was in city government, we actually had to ask the people that we negotiated our, our budgets and that sort of thing, our, our pay increases. We had to ask them if we could claw that back to make things go, because it's either a matter of cutting services or cutting pay, or a combination of those things. And at that point, during the Great Recession, we didn't have a lot of extra resources coming to cities and counties. And so it was a, it was a difficult situation.
Move on.
Yeah.
Can you describe a time where you had to deal with a conflict among, amongst board members? How, how did you handle it? Is there anything you would have done differently?
Good question. You know, I think at the end of the day, one of the things that I, you know, I ended up passing forty pieces of legislation when I was at the Capitol in four years. I was successful during divided government, and I was successful when we had the trifecta these last two years. But even during that trifecta, when you thought anything that, that could be written could pass, there were still some things that didn't have the groundwork laid before the actual opportunity to pass the legislation was upon us. A good example of that is I introduced a piece of legislation for a clean fuel standard in Minnesota. Clean fuel standard would have basically, what it amounted was an opportunity for people to generate credits through farming activities. You know, in Minnesota right now, we have this opportunity for clean fuels. Delta Airlines is flying airplanes out of the airport in Minneapolis and St. Paul that are now with homegrown fuel. We're not pumping it from the ground, we're not getting it from another source in another country. We are actually growing it in our farm fields here in Minnesota right now. And the opportunity was to continue to support that, but also to create a fuel standard where the people who are the most carbon-intensive pay more, and the people who are growing this stuff are getting the benefit to the credits, to help farmers out. On paper, that was a great opportunity. It would have generated about $10 billion in additional electric infrastructure across our state. Electric buses, it would have provided for more charging opportunities, probably, in every community in our state, all eight-hundred-and-sixty-three communities. But, but, there are some people that think that didn't go far enough. And I was really kind of, I was caught off guard on that, unfortunately, because some people believe that electric vehicles are going to be here tomorrow. And I really don't see how that's going to work in an industry that's fuel-intensive, like our shipping industry. You know, we see a lot of semi trucks driving through town. Right now, they're very apprehensive about those electric semi trucks. And a lot of people are really used to rebuilding those diesel vehicles. We can create biofuel vehicles easily enough, homegrown fuels again. But I think that there is an apprehension to support something like that, when we're still talking about the, the old fuel standard or the old fuels of, of yesteryear. And so that kind of side, blindsided me a bit, unfortunately. We, we had some fantastic support in the Senate. In fact, I was working with our ag producers, because our ag community also had a list of red lines and a list of wants and needs and that sort of thing. And I got the list finally. I was like, "Oh, my gosh, we've got this list." But at the end of the day, there just wasn't enough time to process everything. We've got new authors in the House and Senate now, so they're kind of taking that, that mantle and going, or that baton and going forward with it. But I think at the end of the day, it was kind of a, it was a unique opportunity I wasn't expecting. And again, when you're at the Legislature, there's two-hundred-and-one people with two-hundred-and-ten different opinions sometimes. It can be really difficult to get everything done. But I think we're going to get there someday. It just takes more time. And more opportunities, I have to say this, because I think it's really important, more opportunity to work together across the aisle as well. You know, we're starting to see some things happening in the Legislature nowadays, and go, "Whoa, what happened?" These are opportunities, I think, for those folks to say, "We can still work together and get things done." So hopefully, that's the cards of the future for them.
Describe your method of time management and setting priorities.
Well, Bill, I live with this, and this has a great calendar in it, and I'm always constantly using this calendar. If I didn't have it, I feel like I would just be lost, you know? When I'm on vacation, I'm on vacation, but when I'm at work, I'm always living out of that planner. I'm always entering stuff. I know sometimes it's been a challenge for me to always enter everything that's going on, you know, like a ten-minute meeting and that sort of thing. But I think it's really important to plan things out. And I think that's part of the biggest challenge. And I think that's part of the biggest challenge, is to make sure that time management is really important to me. I want to make sure that I'm where I need to be. And early, I showed up a little early today. I always want to show up early. That was something that my grandparents and parents kind of instilled in me. Don't show up on time, always show up a little early if you can. And that takes planning, let me tell you. Because if something goes wrong, all of a sudden, the rest of your day gets hijacked by 10 minutes or 15 minutes. And people's time, to me, is really important. My time is really important as well. So I want to make sure that we're planning for what the meetings are also ahead of time so I can be up to speed and maybe be able to interject with some new ideas that I've developed from what the meeting was supposed to be. Yep.
I have a follow-up question on that.
Yeah.
So Jeff, you more so described your method of time management. How do you then work on setting priorities?
Ah, well, I think it's a triage thing, right? So if somebody from the public is really important and, or just in general, if somebody from the public really wants to have an important discussion about something, it's a matter of making sure that we give them time. And if my schedule is already booked up and there's an opportunity for me to shuffle some things around, I want to make sure that we're hitting everybody when they need to. You know, I think that's really important. And so, in my schedule, I always look for opportunities to maybe shuffle things around when that situation happens. It's a matter of triage. Somebody's calling me angry, I don't want to avoid them. I want to get in front of them. I want to be face to face with them. We're going on the coffee shop or something like that. We're gonna have that conversation. So I think that's really important.
Our residents are engaged, opinionated, and passionate about our housing. What'd you say, Bill? On the other hand, there's a lot of concern for how development might affect property taxes. How would you respond to positive and negative input from the county community regarding the need for local support for housing?
Well, I don't want to sound naive when I say this, but great. I'm glad people are engaged, one way or the other, about what their opinions are. I think that that, this housing idea, this need, this crisis, also provides an opportunity for renaissance. And I think the more people that are engaged and the more people who are giving new ideas about different opportunities or different opportunities for development and that sort of thing, I think are really fantastic. This is a community conversation. We need those people to be involved in that conversation. We weave that fabric of the future by getting those voices heard and incorporated into the final plan. I know in the past, Grant Murray has done a housing plan. That involved a lot of people and community engagement. The county has a plan as well for housing and that sort of thing. And I think the more people you hear, maybe you're starting to hear some more finer points from the chorus, but also maybe there's some new ideas that nobody else has really thought of. And if we are not engaging them, if we're not asking them to kind of help develop that idea, it's a missed opportunity. And I know some people can be quite opinionated in the public, right? I've dealt with that enough in my life. But at the end of the day, it's, I think, a matter of making sure that they're incorporated, they're represented, they're at the table, they're helping to make the difference that we all need to have.
I have a follow-up.
Yeah.
It's common with developing attainable housing nationwide that it, well, it's complicated.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question about that. So it goes through this complex process. And then at the very end, the city council or the county board or the township board that's sort of has the final approval, will get a few phone calls and all that stuff. Do you have any, anything to say about how you would possibly counteract that sort of tendency? Some people estimate as high as 50% of affordable housing projects fail in that last step.
Sure.
That would go through the whole process, which is very discouraging.
Well, I've been on the other side of the table as a city council member, where the need was great for housing and we didn't have the right opportunity for that housing match in the community. That example is in St. Peter, when I was a council member, we worked with Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership and we worked with local psychological providers, mental health providers. And we were with the county judge and we were working with all the folks that we needed to get supported housing in the community with wraparound services for families, especially women dealing with substance abuse issues. We wanted to make sure that we were getting to a point where we're actually encouraging that family to stay together. Those kids were not going to foster care and getting a negative experience out of life. And that we were kind of closing that loop on this cyclical problem that we were having when it came to having substance abuse issues. The first time, it was a challenge for us. And we didn't, we passed the, we passed the approval for the project, but we didn't get the funding. The second year, the legislature came through with a change to the Homestead Act that really kind of, the interpretation was such that we could no longer say this was for families. And it was no longer for women specifically. And then we, so when that change came around, we actually voted seven to zero to vote against the project, which was really weird. But that interpretation came just as we were doing the vote in the city. The third time was the charm, three times the charm, right? And we were able to support that housing all the way through and it's up and running today. And we are taking people from the county, we're taking people from other counties, and families are staying together and they're getting the resources they need to be better equipped for everyday life. Getting their substance abuse issues, taking care of their mental health challenges. And so, yeah, I've been there before and it's unfortunate. It really is a hard vote when you vote against a project. But I think at the end of the day, that made that third time a much better yes. And there was more people in the community that were also supporting it. You know, sometimes folks get this idea of NIMBY, right? Not my backyard. We don't want people with substance abuse challenges in my backyard. We don't want kids from troubled homes running around our neighborhoods. But by the time we actually get to that third vote, we were working with those engaged community members in the neighborhood. We were getting to the point where they were supportive of it as well. That helped too.
Jeff, the next question pertains to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Considering what you know of this position's job responsibilities, do you think you'll be able to perform the duties with or without reasonable accommodations?
Without, yes.
Okay, now we get the open-ended, your other next chance to tell us anything, anything else you'd like us to know about you with the Americans with Disabilities.
I thought a lot about this job. I thought a lot about this opportunity. I thought a lot about the needs of the community and the opportunity that exists for a real renaissance in Cook County. It's the seventh lowest population county in the entire state, as you know. And there are a lot of employers looking for employees. And they're not getting them right now. We're talking about sheriff's deputies. We're talking about people that run the ambulance. We're talking about people who just need a place to live. You know, I just heard an interview on WTIP the other day and Anna Hamilton, from Hamilton, was talking about how she has a list. And these are people that can't otherwise afford a home. But they deserve a home. Everybody in the state, I believe, everybody in this country, everybody in this world, I believe deserves a home. If you don't have a home, it's really hard for your kids to do homework. An example of that was when I was working on a project. It's called Park Row Crossing, was Affordable Housing in St. Peter. The next election in 2015, I came around and I door knocked, because they were in my district. I door knocked that whole complex. And I remember bumping into a woman with two little kids running around and, you know, you open the door and you get the living room, right? It was like an open layout, open plan. And I remember just asking, you know, are you happy here? Is this what you were looking for? Is this something that's accommodating your needs? And she broke down and cried a little bit. And she said, this is, this is what I wanted to do for my kids, to provide them with stable housing. She admitted she did think she didn't want to to provide housing couch to couch and things like that for her children. And she didn't have the opportunity to access this, to the affordable housing that we had set up in the community to give those, that family a chance. And so, I was really proud of that. And so, I think a lot about this as an opportunity for some real renaissance in the community. And I really do hope that we continue to engage the community, continue to provide and receive new ideas. And, you know, as I was working on this project that you had the homework assignment for the project idea, I was thinking about these different opportunities that exist in our state and how well-suited we are and well-positioned we are as a county to get those resources. And we have some of those resources already that we've received, right? Through the different projects in the county. And I really do think that that's exactly why the legislature, that's why the federal government, that's why everybody sets these programs up to help rise the tide for everybody and to provide new opportunity. And so, it's a matter of rolling up my sleeves, doing what Jason and this board's been doing already. It's tacking down that money and getting that to a developer and developing new homes. And I'm looking forward to being part of that with you all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Finally, do you have any questions for us?
I have, I have two questions, I guess, that I would like to get maybe more of a finer point on. My first question is, what do you envision as a board for the start date for this position? I'm not letting anybody answer. Just, you all have to have the same answer, okay?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. What's the start date? What are you anticipating to be a first day for this position?
The situation is, Jason's already left us and sent Steve on to a contract basis. He's working in, right?
Yeah.
Our former board chair is willing to step in just to kind of keep the lights on and make sure bills are paid after February 1st.
Sure.
For as long as it takes. But obviously not, she's very knowledgeable and effective, but not, you know, she won't be fully invested in the system. So really, it's a similar thing, I guess.
And she needs to work remotely on top of it so that that's another factor.
So we have that, you know, so we're not like completely left in the lurch, but it's not a real satisfactory solution either.
Right.
Yeah, basically similar.
Then the other question I had, I think you just answered, is how long do you think Jason's gonna be around to help out the new person? Sounds like the end of the month, right?
Well, I mean, he's not going anywhere. Well, I mean, technically. He's going on vacation. No, I mean, it sounds great, actually. No, yeah, I'll be, so I'm done this, the interim on the 31st, but I told the board, of course, if someone comes up, I will screen their calls.
Okay. Yeah, those were the two questions I had. I think it's really successful to have a continuity when you're doing something like this. And, you know, we don't want to miss any opportunities for funding. Part of the grant process that I was looking at for a project in the community that we were working on the homework for, that RFP is gonna be coming out here pretty soon. I realize part of the job's reporting, federal, state, how are we using the money, that sort of thing. So I think that it's really important that there be some sort of continuity. And whoever starts this and go, oh my God, this is due tomorrow, and it's like a federal thing, you know, or something like that. So I appreciate that. Thanks for being so, you know, I think, available as well. I remember when I first called, it was to you, to talk about the position. I talked to the interim county administrator as well. I didn't bug you because I didn't want to. I figured you had enough you were working on already. Plus, again, you already did a lot on the community side through the media. And so, I felt like I got to know you a lot through that process and yeah, well, don't be. You did a great job. Very articulate about what's going on and where the money's coming from as well. You know, working with partners like the IRRR, working with the State Housing Finance Authority. You know, as a legislator in the past here, not too recent past, but I know you're Senator, I know you're Representative. I've worked with them. And so, I would think that that would be one of those things where we continue to network as well and to work with as well, to find those opportunities and to partner with them to get those opportunities and to, money on the table that can be spent on housing. So, thank you.
So Bill, maybe you would like to let us talk about next steps so that Jeff is aware of what he wants to do.
Well, the next steps are doing, checking references and doing a background check, kind of generic, one of those. And we need to have a discussion, first of all, as a board, you know, as to how to move forward and with whom. And I think it's been impressed on you that we have an immediate need. I mean, it's, you know, it's not something that we're looking six months out.
Yeah.
And, but we can hobble along in the meantime to a degree, but we'd really need somebody on board and get introduced into the community. And then from there on, it's partly a matter of helping, the board helping the director meet who they need to meet and, you know, continuing on with how do we move forward from here? There are certainly a change, there are changes in funding levels coming. The ARPA money is no longer available. The county board was extremely generous to the housing authority in terms of what resources we got that helped stimulate the construction that's going on and the ones that are coming up shortly. But there may be some changes in direction of what we can afford to do and what we can do in other situations, housing, you know, ownership versus rental and those kind of things. But that's all work that will need to be done with the new director and probably really redoing a strategic plan, which our last job was 2023.
Okay.
And I think it's time to relook at that. This is a good time to do it, so.
Okay.
Any other comments or helpful?
Well, Jeff, we'd like to thank you for the time you spent with us and the questions you've asked. And we will be in touch in the near future.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep. I anticipate the snow. I will, definitely will. Yep. Thank you. Yep. It looks like a snow globe out there right now.
I hope it's written out in the physical requirements.
Well, Haley, we'd like to welcome you here today to our round of interviews. These are our final interviews for the HRA, our Housing Development Committee. And we'll go around and introduce ourselves. I'm Anne Sullivan, Cook County Commissioner for District Four and the ultimate on the HRA for our county board.
Hi, I am Gary Gamble, Commissioner, Cook County, District Two.
I'm Bill Hanson, I live in Grand Ray, and I am District Two Commissioner for the HRA.
Chris Ryan, I'm the District Four Commissioner and the Vice Chair of the HRA.
Bill Gableer, District Five, which is the West End, and I'm the current Board Chair.
Richard Allison, I live and work in Holland, which is the East End of First District.
I want to say something more.
You've got a seat for him, though.
Jason Hill, I'm seeking my replacement.
Yes, I'm familiar with you.
I'm Alison Plummer, I'm the Human Resources Director for Cook County.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, we'll turn things over to Bill Gableer, who is the Chair of the HRA.
It's appropriate to note that Commissioner Gamble is the new County Board Representative to the HRA Board, and Commissioner Sullivan is the alternate. So, and that's important because the County Board was instrumental in us getting started and was instrumental in finding funding enough to put several projects together that couldn't have happened without their support. And so, that's one of the, we really appreciate their partnership, and that's how we start looking at things, is a partnership.
Well, thank you, Chair Gamble, we appreciate that. And Haley, for the viewing public, if you would like to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your background and experience.
Yeah, of course. Well, I'm Haley. I currently live in Minneapolis, have been coming up to Cook County for many years with dreams of moving up here, which is easier said than done, as you all know. I am approaching my 20-year anniversary in affordable housing, which is weird to say, but it's true. I fell into affordable housing work right out of college with a role with the Housing Development Consortium in Seattle, which is a coalition of affordable housing agencies, public agencies, all interested in housing development. And so, I dove in doing all of their member services, I was the Board Liaison, all of that good stuff. And from there, the ball was rolling. I did a brief stint at Wells Fargo, which was interesting, and then went right on to Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity when I moved to Twin Cities. And I was there for several years, started out as a housing counselor, went on to manage that program, all the funding, grant writing, all of that good stuff, too. I left Twin Cities to pursue my Masters in Public Policy, which I did, and was a really good reminder that while I love learning, I do not love school, per se. But it was a really good experience, and once that was done, I took on a role with the Frogtown-Rondo Home Fund, which was, or is, a coalition of organizations that are invested and interested in affordable housing development in the Frogtown and Rondo neighborhoods of St. Paul, which have kind of a unique set of challenges. There, I was the sole paid staff person, so I was managing the coalition, putting together a strategic plan, making sure it had momentum. I was housed in the City of St. Paul offices, so I got to do a lot of work with the planning and development folks there. From there, I went on to do a kind of random spot in my career where I was working with a startup, supporting humanitarian aid workers. And so, it was fresh, like, my first day in the office, the executive director was like, "Well, let's go shopping for office furniture." So, brand new. So, that job was really interesting in that part of it was like setting up the coffee machine, and the other part was trying to establish a donor base. You know, it was really all over the place, depending on the day, which has its pros and its cons, as you're probably intimately aware of at this point. But once I found this role with Grounded Solutions Network, I'd been following the work of this organization for a really long time and couldn't resist the move. So, I've been there for just about five years now, doing marketing outreach. We're a national coalition of affordable housing organizations, mainly those that are invested in shared equity housing, so permanent or lasting affordability. It's been a wonderful experience, but then this comes up, and I had to give it a shot. So, here I am.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that felt like a lot of talking about myself, so. Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Well, Haley, let's get started on the questions. What goals would you set for yourself to accomplish in the first three months of the job, first six months, and by the end of the first year?
Yeah. Well, I read this question, and I thought my immediate response was like, slow, 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 because every time I've worked in community work, it always moves slower than you want it to, and then I was like, "I don't want to say that in front of them, because I don't want you to think I'm going to come in and do nothing for the first year." But definitely, the first three months would be spent acquaint, you know, acquainting myself. I don't live in this community, I'd definitely be building those relationships, building that trust, leaning on you all a lot to help me do that. The first six months, I sort of just pictured keeping the boat afloat. There's a lot of things that are moving and in the works right now, and it would really be a priority for me to make sure that those are moving at the fastest pace possible. At the end of the first year, I would certainly hope I would have been able to add or contribute to this development pipeline, find, you know, any funding sources that haven't been tapped yet, and make some progress for this new next chapter of the HRA. And maybe have gotten Jason to sign a contract for helping us. We'll talk about that later, I guess.
Next question, can you provide an example of the time you had to assemble a team of partners to address an organizational or community need, and how did you go about it, and what was the outcome, and what worked well, and what would you have done differently?
Yeah. I think this is really a lot of what I do right now, and so, you know, the title that's reflected on my resume, I get feedback sometimes that it doesn't always represent the work I do, which is not uncommon, I don't think, by any means. But my role currently is working with organizations all across the country who are looking for technology solutions for both managing data, but also leveraging impact data, so that they can actually track their programs, see how they're doing, bring that kind of data to funders, that kind of thing. So, I'm really finding holistic solutions for people that often involve like a tech stack sort of approach. So, for example, one group I've been working with lately is Clark County, Nevada, which is where Las Vegas is, and it's not a simple solution, you know? They have all of these moving parts, they're starting this huge CLT with a bunch of units right off the bat. So, finding them all the different pieces they need to jump into that with a really reliable data management system, but also all these other tools in place for feeding data into that, for accessing potential homeowners and applicants. There's a lot of different people involved in that, different consultants, myself, other GSN staff. It's been a pretty huge project, and it's finally out of my hands, which felt really good. But yeah, I do that kind of thing on a daily basis.
And what, just to follow up on that, so what have you found does not work? What approach have you tried?
Um, I think it's made me an over-communicator, maybe, in some ways, because like, when you're working with six different consultants on one project, everyone's doing different things, and then, of course, this is not a slam on government entities at all, but they can be a lot harder to work with from a nonprofit perspective sometimes. So, just making sure that I am sending regular updates that contain everything anyone might need to know has become kind of a regular ritual for me, because one person gets running down a path without the rest of them, and then you can really run into some, some big issues.
So, the, what didn't work was over-communicating or not communicating enough?
Not communicating enough.
Okay.
There you go, thanks.
The next question, please, describe your experiences working with broadcast media to educate the public and build public support for your project.
Yeah, I don't think I've actually had any direct experience with broadcast media. I do a lot of presentations at the national level, so like, last week, I was meeting with Neighbor Works America and had hundreds of attendees, or the National Housing Resource Center was like, a month ago. So, I do a lot of that, representing Grounded Solutions Network and all our various programs, talking to folks about all the different iterations of lasting affordability, often with a plug of why being a member is a good idea. So, I do a lot of that kind of public-facing, you know, presentation-style work. I go to a lot of different conferences and do sessions and things like that. But I don't think I've like, been interviewed by KSTP before or anything like that, so that would be new to me. My uncle's a sports reporter, but that's as close as I can get.
So, what would colleagues say they like most about working with you? And what would they say is most challenging?
Yeah, this is like, the most awkward question to ask a Minnesotan, I feel like. I would say, my colleagues would say that I'm upbeat and optimistic. I keep all the pessimism internal, so they don't know that it's going on, but, no, I think I'm a, you know, I like to keep it upbeat, keep it moving, I take an interest in people. I've ended up with the dubious title of Chair of our Fund Committee at Grounded Solutions Network, which, blessing or curse, I'm unsure, but I think that's, that's probably a product of that. So, it makes it a little bit easier for me, anyway, to work through tough stuff, when you can, can keep it positive, or keep focused on the positive. The most challenging part is probably referencing back to the over-communication. I like to make sure that I really understand what people expect of me, what people's priorities are, and I think that can drive people crazy sometimes, like, "I thought we already talked about this," and it's like, "Well, I wanted him writing, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page." So, I think that could maybe come up as a challenge occasionally, but maybe they'd say something worse than that, I'm not sure.
Please tell us about a time when there was a challenge or conflict with components, partners, finances, or the public in a project, and how did you find resolution, and what lessons were, did you learn from that experience?
Yeah. I think a good example here would be a recent Grounded Solutions example. So, as I said, we have member organizations all over the place, including Minnesota. We have a pretty big contingent of organizations here that are members, and I have relationships with them from previous jobs, or my partner has worked at Twin Cities Habitat for over a decade, and so, you know, I see people all the time. And I was getting a lot of feedback, like, folks would catch me every time they saw me and be like, "I'm really upset about this new initiative you are all doing. I don't feel like, you know, your membership is being represented." Kind of some pretty serious accusations around the trajectory of Grounded Solutions, which is a tricky spot to be in, when, you know, I'm not the President and CEO or anything like that. But I kind of have a history of mediating these kinds of conflicts, and so, I did bring that up with our leadership in a couple different forums, and then I advised the Minnesota Coalition, at least, to get together and write a letter just detailing all of their concerns that I could bring to our board, so they could actually reflect on it, you know, come up with a response, see if there were changes that they could make to the plans that we had in place. And at this point, I feel like we were really able to work through some of that. Once people sat down and kind of detailed what the issues were, they weren't unsolvable problems, you know? And I think that once we opened those doors of communication and kind of could navigate that a little bit, massage different areas, so that they didn't necessarily have to be so aggressive, people became a lot more comfortable.
Next question, Haley, can you describe a time where you had to deal with a conflict among board members, and how did you handle it, and is there anything that you would have done differently?
Sure. Should I be nervous about how many questions about conflict around here? I would say the two examples that pop into my head quickly are the Housing Development Consortium, where I was the Board Liaison, so I was the one who was receiving most of the feedback from the Board at any given time, and then the Frogtown-Rondo Home Fund. And both of those situations were, much like Grounded Solutions, I guess, groups or coalitions of organizations that were working together towards a common goal, which is tough, you know? It can be really challenging, because especially when you have cross-sector collaborations, people have very different motivations, and generally, you know, different ways of getting to the same place. So, I think my strategy there really became to kind of play a neutral role, and I think that probably came up in that Grounded Solutions example, too, where I'm like, "Hey, I'm not the, you know, I'm here to hear, hear you out. I'm not necessarily the, you know, here to argue a point with you." So, finding that way to be kind of a neutral person they can open up to and talk to, so that I can then use that to try and find some common ground, has proven really useful for me. The Frogtown-Rondo Home Fund Coalition, when I came into that, was really a tense space to be in, and I think it's because that communication had broken down, and there wasn't that neutral party that people could bring their concerns to, and have them kind of addressed or vocalized, even in a group setting. It made it a lot easier to work through some of that.
And how would you, what would you have done differently? Is there anything?
Well, sure, there's always things you would have maybe not said, or, you know, gotten two people in a room that you wouldn't necessarily get in the same room again in the future. There's things like that that you learn as you go, especially my early days at the Housing Development Consortium, where it was like, "Oh, you guys just personally don't like each other, so we're going to make sure to navigate this a little bit differently." But I think having a broader knowledge of the options now helps with some of that, too, because I was also, when I was younger, you know, I didn't know what was what, and so, whether that hurt or helped, I'm not sure, but.
Thanks.
Could you describe your method of time management and how you subtract these?
Yeah, I always love this question, because you have an idea of how you approach it in your head, and then in reality, it's hard to watch it fall apart sometimes, but, you know, it's, I try. Time blocking is one of my favorite things, so I can go on my calendar, block off chunks of time to do big projects. The trick is getting people to not interrupt you during those blocks of time, and to kind of have that boundary set. But that's generally how I set aside time to do really, like, deep work. I think one of the issues, my experience is mostly in the nonprofits, so I don't know if it's like this everywhere else, but having deep thinking time to like, strategize and actually work through stuff can be hard to find or prioritize sometimes, so I really have been trying to do that in the last several years. And I think it's made me a lot better at my job, and, yeah, helped me grow a lot that way. More like practically, I use tools like Asana, of course, and Google Calendar, but I don't know if you guys use Asana, but I'm addicted to it now, so, you know, I'd probably bring it with me wherever I go.
Are you actually sauna?
Well, that too! This is my sauna time, don't interrupt me! Yeah. I believe it's sauna, I don't know if you've, yeah.
Oh, is that an app?
Yeah, Asana, sorry, I made some assumptions.
I thought we were talking about the real deal, where you jump into a lake afterwards.
I'm really sorry about that. Yeah, it's a, like, a task management app, so it's like, you can share projects with external parties, internal parties, you can add, edit, like, it's really pretty cool.
Question, our residents are engaged, opinionated, and passionate about our housing needs. On the other hand, there's a lot of concern for how development might affect property taxes. How would you respond to positive and negative impacts from the Cook County community regarding the need for local support for housing development?
Yeah, I mean, I think the level of engagement, especially given the relatively small size of your population, is really inspiring and exciting, and probably a reason people want this job in the first place. So, I think coming at it with that kind of appreciation of like, "Hey, you're here, you're saying something," is an important first step. I also think finding those different incentives is really important, like, someone might say that I'm paying too much in property taxes that's going to an affordable housing development, but there's always something in there that can connect with them, there's something that they can connect with, an argument you can make. And I think the only way you really get to that point is by talking and learning about someone and getting to know them. And I guess the hope would be that you, given the size and scale, have the opportunity to do that with community members, because I really do believe that anytime there's that kind of conflict, we can find that common ground, or that incentive that might not be the same as the next person's, that they could relate to, to at least not be so vocal about their opposition, maybe, I don't know.
Thank you. This question pertains to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Considering what you know of this position's job responsibilities, do you think you will be able to perform the duties with or without reasonable accommodations?
I think I'll be able to do it without reasonable accommodations.
Thank you.
All right, just another open end of one, this is your opportunity to tell us anything else you'd like us to know about you as it pertains to this job.
Yeah, well, I think something that we kind of talked about in that first interview was the contrast in my background and skillset to Jason's, because that's been on my mind a lot in this role, like, I would be coming at it from a different perspective and a different angle. I think I have a unique set of skills that could be well-leveraged for a role like this. But yeah, it's in the back of my mind, is, you know, are people open to that, you know, or has Jason kind of set a standard that, I mean, publicly, it sounds like you're pretty beloved at this point.
You're an album.
Yeah, so like, making sure that that's what folks want in this role is kind of, is pretty important to me at this, at this point. I think, though, my, my experience with strategic planning, community engagement, and that kind of stuff would be really useful here, but just making sure that that's out there.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, actually, I was kind of wondering if one or all of you could answer question one for me, what you expect the person in this role to accomplish in the first three months, six months, one year, or whatever you want to say about that.
I can, I could start, but others have got other ideas as well, we've learned that, and that's okay. But this is a kind of a reflection time for us. Jason leaving is, you know, a fact, and we'll deal with that, but our last strategic plan was 2023. The landscape has changed since then, the funding landscape has changed on the federal level, and on the state level, things, you know, aren't going to be the same, there's not going to be as much money, just being, I think, pretty direct about it, for housing, and we were, as I, I mentioned, the county, the support of the County Board has been terrific, and we need to continue to have that continue, but I think it's really time to relook at where we concentrate our efforts. You know, we've really done a pretty good job on the multifamily side with a couple of developments in Grand Ray, and hopefully, we'll score the homeownership opportunity down in Topey that looks like it'll go, but realistically, you know, one of the, actually one of the programs we instituted here, which I think could be built on and built up, is the weatherization-type program for single-family homes. Plenty of older homes that got leaky windows and, you know, need insulation, or you name it, and we were able to get a few things going, thanks partly to Chris and his organization he's also with, to get that underway, and so, we've had some success. And so we've had some success. We need more money to do that, but I think that's potentially, there's, we could knock on some doors to find that. But I think just that's the first three months and maybe that drags into six months. And by the end of the first year, I would hope that there'd be some production. When we formed the organization and did our goal-setting and all that, the three things that we said were the criteria we wanted to, you know, concentrate on was action, transparency, and inclusive, and being inclusive. And so those are, at the end of the year, we'd want to know where did, where did we go, particularly for me on action, because that's what you need to present to other funders, to the county board, to the citizens. So that's enough for me.
I think, oh, my, I think that the structure that you outlined of having the first three months be primarily develop the network, develop a strong network, it's become, you know, ways for you to leverage your time, your six-month being to kind of manage the pipeline of existing projects, keep them going forward, the 12 months to do some incremental building of the pipeline. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that what you're echoing, part of what Bill said, I think we're at somewhat of an inflection point. I, I guess, yeah, it's just, one point would be, I think, that we're at an inflection point where I think the strategic planning needs to happen sort of in, in parallel in there someplace, because I think we need, we need just to revisit for ourselves what our priorities need to be going forward, what types of projects, where should they be, what should be, which partners, which parts of the community are going to be most, are going to be our most important next target, what kinds of housing, that, you know, there's a lot of good questions. And then I think that the distraction is going to be undoubtedly, that, you know, I have no doubt that of the existing projects as they go forward, stuff happens. So it's going to be, you know, difficult to, you know, but yeah, it's going to be difficult to, to manage crises as they come up and still have the mental space and the, and time to manage a process of really developing a strat, a revisited strategy that is not only coherent, but also has the buy-in of a lot of importance to the benefits of the community.
Yeah, I can only really echo what they said, but I think, you know, in the first year, really three components. One is sort of developing that pool of developers that are interested in working here and then doing the, you know, the obvious, finding the funding. Housing doesn't work for workforce housing or affordable housing doesn't work without subsidy, you have to ask them from somewhere, being creative and diligent in that, it'd be super important, learning, learning all you can and looking for new ways to fund it. And then I still think we have a long way to go in community support for housing. I mean, it's pretty, I'd say close to universal. Everybody will say, yes, we need more housing. But then when you get down to the project level, it kind of breaks down and people have different ideas. And Jason did a really good job of bringing the community along, but there's more to go, it's a, it's a slow, a slow process. Fortunately, we have the newspaper and a local radio station and that are very eager to help disseminate information, so that's a big plus, it makes your job easier. Yeah, and then just having the grit to follow these things through because they're really complicated and it's just one problem after another. And that can be very discouraging, but I think it's.
What now? Sounds really fun so far.
But that's a necessary part of the job and we all have to, and you have to be careful not to be, not to get angry, you know, when something doesn't go, go right for, for not good reasons. I think that just comes with it and that's a strength that Jason has, like, well, that was disappointing, but we still have to work with these people, so it's just fun. And yeah, so those are the kind of things that I'd like to see.
Somebody made a comment to me over the holidays, like one of those family members you never see, that was sort of tongue-in-cheek, but it was like, you've been in affordable housing for this long and the problem's only gotten worse. So like, and I was sitting there thinking like, that's hilarious, but it does come with a certain amount of resilience being in the industry for sure.
There are those of us that can say that about their lifetime.
Yeah, right. I'm dedicated.
We've worked in climate change for thirty-plus years.
There you go. It's more relatable than I realized.
The comment you hear a lot here is, well, nobody's doing anything. But that just shows something they haven't, they don't know what's going on. If they knew, they'd be like, oh wow, there's a lot of things. Same thing with economic development, nobody's doing anything for economic development in economy and, well, nobody's at the government line saying, don't come start a business here, you know?
Right.
Lots of people are working on it, it's just hard.
And you still get that kind of feedback despite, like, I think you all in this community have a really admirable network of information. And I mean, those of us in Minneapolis and other places can make it a hobby to like, follow affordable housing in Cook County, which is really cool, because even in Minneapolis, I think people know less about the kind of development, unless they're on like the development blotter, things like that too, so.
A lot of rural America doesn't have the sorts of, rural sorts of area like that.
Yeah, totally agree.
I did.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was, there was a kind of practical, or a couple, am I allowed to ask Jason a question?
Yeah.
I was just curious, your experience starting in this role, what were the really impactful or most helpful resources outside of the board, who I'm just gonna go ahead and assume were super helpful?
Not at all.
Yeah, like, how'd you get up to speed and acquainted with stuff?
Well, so I think there wasn't anything organizationally to get up to speed on, so I had to create, they had to speed. It was more about getting connected with the community. And so I was fortunate to have a board chair of tenure assignments and even prior to accepting this role, I did a tour to France of the Grand Ray. And that leadership and, and so even more is going to be instrumental in that, making those introductions. And then you will find that the community leaders here, like you've already experienced or mentioned, it's a small and active and technical community. And so folks from the chamber to the hospitals, like everybody, there's nobody that says, we don't like housing, everybody's like, yes, we understand housing's a problem. So convincing them of where, how, when, that's a whole other ballgame. But the upfront, the initial difficulty was literally creating the systems, documents, templates, you know, office furniture, those, those are the same, similar situation.
Wish I'd been there for that.
Yeah, lots of Allen wrenches and desks. But that was the hard, it was creating this sort of foundation, what was the hard part of it, that the community is great about networking and connecting and there are a lot of engaged community groups that meet outside of the HRA about housing and about related issues, there's a lot overlap there. So I don't, I don't actually perceive that being an issue, it's just going to be connecting those dots and getting familiar with local stakeholders. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so it's exactly what it seems like.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I'd like to add on to that if I could, just from a standpoint that our previous county administrator, James Jorky, had set up a leadership council in the community of representatives of so many of the different groups in the community, including educators and the sheriff and, I mean, the hospital, you go right down the list. And that group got tagged housing as its top priority over, you know, months of discussion and whatever. And I sincerely hope that that model will continue. I mean, there'll be a new James Jorky as county administrator at some point, but I found as, because I was really, at that stage, just getting into the community myself and it was extremely helpful. And it, you know, the community isn't that huge, for one thing, six thousand people or thereabouts, so people are pretty well-connected. But I'd ask the county commissioners if you could encourage that again in.
February thirteenth is the next meeting for the community leadership group. And, you know, housing is a topic, childcare has been a topic. And it is actually through that group that the HRA, the concept of the HRA was formed. So it's a really strong message that needs every other month. And our representatives from the Grand Portage Reservation, they're in those meetings as well, they help us. One of the things we'll look at now, because this was very, very active during the pandemic, is moving to an in-person model.
Okay, oh, exciting.
Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up on Jason, if he asked a question, I think if you could speak to what you brought, the tools you brought to the position, not your, your background and the experience that helped you in doing, you know, what was tasked, you know, for you in this position, but what was it that equipped you going into the position, your experience background?
Sure, and Haley, I just spoke to this, and I really appreciate the foresight and acknowledging, one, you can move different skills, skillset, which is still valuable and can do different things. I was coming with development experience and contacts that I was able to bring here and relationships with some of those funders. There's, and I think the commissioner's already spoken to this, there's a little bit of a transitioning happening predominantly because of the funding scarcity. Arma's gone, the gamebuster year, we had the capital, a lot of those funds in 2023 are implemented or spoken for, not enough of them, but a lot of them that are pertinent for, for us anyway. So to your point, Commissioner, I had that background of developing local government, different skillset. The need probably, or at least near-term future of the HRA is going to be pitting slightly in the management, I, from my perspective, managing existing programs and funds that are secured, helping to manage grants, helping to do community outreach, some of the things that were spoken to. So, you know, you can, this, this skill side, like the relationships are going to be the biggest thing, and I had to build them with IFL2, I never, wasn't able to work with them in Duluth, they don't like, they're probably able to leave, but it's just not part of their service to our territory, so. Again, I just brought the local government piece and the development piece, which is very much my lens. Some of that has been, the foundation's been laid, so it's more, I think, the biggest task will be, here we are, here's what's in the pipeline, helping those get over the ones that are not over the finish line, just making sure that, like you already mentioned, making sure that those don't get lost in, you know, translation or transition. And then now let's level set, what's your strategic plan going to look like moving forward? Because we've got a couple of years to see how these things sort of shake out.
Priority one, getting on Mackenzie Scott's radar, am I right?
I don't know that she takes personal pause in.
Dark horse, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good luck.
I, I've had some assumptions about this, I guess, too, but as far as admin support from the county goes in a role like this, like being the solo staff person, contract review and some of that stuff, does Cook County support the HRA director in that, or?
So, hmm, that was the other part of the thing that I came with, was contracts, devolved and review. We have, every year, we have contracts for attorney services. Just fortunately, because I've done so many contracts, I was able to do most of them myself and have return, I was able to save a couple bucks for the, you know, the HRA and the community. We still have access to those folks and now there are templates created, you know, in our files and can be used. So the HRA, to your point, this is actually an important point to make, I think. You're right, it is one employee. We have talked, the board's been very supportive, and the county board, for that matter, largely has been supportive of exploring admin help for both EDA and the HRA, and what could that look like? It was actually, I was the one who was saying, not now, I don't have time or don't know how to delegate those things, you know, that was probably one of my faults. But I think that that's something to, to consider and think about, if it's a need in the future, I think there'd be support for that. Right now, as it is, we have attorney on contract, we also have elders, public finance to help with the public finance side of things, we're going to give tax, they can Google sweep the things. The county provides payroll services, but the HRA now transitioned out of the outer office, so the HRA has its own bank accounts and manages its own fund. We have a bookkeeper and the financial committee has access, the director has access, so I issue, I do all the accounting, the checks issuing, tracking, that sort of thing. So most of the services, basically the county provides human resource assistance, thank you, and payroll, like paying payroll, withholding taxes. The other things are either contracted or, or the director does.
Okay. Yeah, I have a, contracts are a big part of my job now, and I have a lot of experience with that in grant reporting and management, but it's still a little like, phew, if there's no safety net, you know, it's just something else to consider, so I want to make sure that there's that.
There has been a light item in our budget for administrative help. In addition, it's just not been spent up to this point. And so it's not that we're without resources to, to get what is needed, but Jason's been able to handle the stuff so far by himself. But I think the joint discussion with the EDA would be real helpful right now, because they've got a new director as well and, and they're flying solo, so.
It's a little mutual support.
And I think that the other asset that you have coming in, as Jason alluded to, is that we do now have a library of, of past, you know, resolutions, contracts.
Templates, yeah, right. That's huge.
Those provide a starting point for a lot of it.
Chat GPT. Kidding, I'm kidding.
You can't have like Minnesota resolution, it's like, not computer.
I haven't tried to like create a contract in there before, but I feel like I'm going to go home now and do that, so.
We also have to acknowledge Jana, because we're totally incapable of putting ourselves onto that screen. And it's very important for transparency that the people be able to see our meetings and so.
So you're here specifically for live streaming, important questions.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, Jana's been instrumental, actually. The county's been really supportive of helping me in help from a, on a ongoing basis, so the payrolls and things that offer support for, you know, continually, the county board and the county administrator and Jana have been fantastic, being supportive of the HRA. And running live streams and also publishing, you know, agendas when we send them, that sort of thing's been very close partnership, so I don't want to sell Jana or Todd or anybody else in the county short, that's been very, very helpful. If I know at least this board, I mean, if they change or they just change personalities overnight, which is very strange, they understand that contracts are needed as things evolve and change, we can explore how we allocate resources for, we need this kind of service, which we weren't needing before, and what does that look like?
Yeah, well, and I understand your choice to not like endeavor to hire someone and figure out how to navigate all that when you're trying to like get things moving in a real way too, that makes sense.
Can I, I didn't introduce myself earlier, but yeah, my name is Jana Okonkwo, and my position is executive administrative assistant to the county administrator, so which we have an interim right now. And also I assist the commissioners for, that's my role one way. And then other support for staff, but mainly it's working with the county administrator and commissioners, so. Yeah, and I guess with, with us live streaming county board meetings, that's how I.
Got connected, yeah.
She knows where to push the button.
Did you used to work with WTIP?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought I recognized you from there, all right, yeah, cool, okay. Do I have any more questions? I think that was all of the question, well, I don't think, maybe I would ask again, like in the first one, the kind of vision you have as far as someone from outside of Cook County transitioning here, like how you see the ideal timeline for a full transition, the remote aspect of that, just to talk about it in a little more detail. Your ideal vision anyway, would probably be to have somebody who lives here, but let's say.
I'll start, I mean, I, I think that, yeah, that's probably pretty important to be here physically, especially as you noted in the first three months where, you know, you're getting plugged into the community, you know, the folks don't know you yet. You know, I think that the, the job is. You know, I think that the, the, the job is. Flexible in terms of, you know, not, it's not a nine to five job. It's not a, it's not a come to your desk and, you know, it's a.
Full time clock.
Yeah, and it, I think that you'll be evaluated on what gets done, not on, you know, your attendance. And but that said, you know, as you said, there's things to do, tactically, it's really important to be here early on. I can't speak to greater flexibility down the road, you know, once, once the level of trust is already established with the key stakeholders. My experience is that often once you've sort of passed that threshold, then it becomes much easier to transition to, you know, phone calls and some calls and stuff like that. But. But there's kind of a pretty heavy investment required upfront, I think initially to build those relationships.
Yeah.
We, Jason does not hold to a forty hour work week schedule in the office and we don't expect that really. And his, he's been out and about and. Really has been effective in being out and about, but you've got to have a base, you know, to be out from and. And that's, you know, in the community. And so that's really important. It couldn't be a full-time remote job. But there is aspects of the job that are remote. That's easy to accommodate for us, but that's our philosophy anyway.
Sure. That maybe leads me to the most dangerous interview question, which is about work-life balance. Like, is it? It always makes the interviewer look a little like, are they trying to be lazy? But I'm actually just really curious what the work-life balance looks like in a role like this.
I think you used the word earlier, boundaries. Like we time block and it's the same thing, try to adhere to them like that. I think from, a lot of it will come down to your own time management and how you work. I sometimes bring my work cell phone on me on vacation because it's my problem. But I think, I actually think that's one of the benefits of this rule, like maybe you'll have a county, county board meeting, well, not county, well, like city council that goes till eight thirty or something at night on a Wednesday. Then fine, then you, you know, start working in, in, you know, ten or noon or whatever. Like, like Commissioner Bryant was saying, it's, it's more about being effective. So I have found the, the flexibility is actually very convenient because the developed world has a different clock than the banker's clock. Or typical county government or government for that matter. So as long as, like, there's, I found it easier to do work-life balance because, for example. There was snow before today and I was here, you could go, I could go ski for an hour and then go, and then I just stayed till six or whatever, get whatever I needed done. So it's more, again, it's more about, once you build that trust, like Commissioner Bryant said, and you have those relationships with the communities, the moment you're effective in getting things done. You're able to dictate what makes sense in life is, I mean, here, for example, there are people who don't have childcare because there's no childcare. So. The reality is that they have to do the boardroom home for half their county employees. I know this kind of tag team and partners and to get kids and so on. So. I think that people in this community recognize that life's a little different here, can be, because of some of those resource challenges and just the, like, you know, geographic location. So there's just more awareness of that. That's, that's been my experience, it's been a pretty positive one. As compared to, you know, the eight to the five or six in the city booth in the office every day.
Right. Yeah, okay.
And I just want to add to that. I, I work for a different organization. Cook County is different than the HRA.
Yep.
However, I have found that the community and Cook County as an employer. But still very supportive in those work-life balance because those boundaries have also been very important to me and. Not only do I work here, but for the last ten years, I've also been a swim team instructor, a group exercise instructor at a local Y. Come to classes, he knows. And so I established those boundaries. That's what I've needed as an employee to be effective for myself, also to prevent burnout. And that has never once been addressed or identified as a negative thing. And it's, seems like it's become more prevalent, not only here in our organization, but in other organizations as well, the clinic, the hospital. We see many people that create those boundaries, like have that mental, physical, emotional break during the day because they've identified as. Identified that need for them that makes them effective. And again, fully supported. I've never heard anything but support for those types of decisions.
Oh, good. That's good to hear. I think I, my partner made a joke about this before I came because he works in land acquisition and project management. And he, I always get irritated on vacation when he answers his phone. Like, we're in Scotland and he answers his phone and he's like, you know, if you got a job like this, you're probably gonna be answering your phone on vacation.
Yeah, I have been in Canada, so I'm answering my phone for dollars.
Feels very international.
Well, one thing I did think, I just wanted to mention to you, to your question, but I don't know, you were wondering about the. The initial onset and the transition is housing here is a thing. It's difficult to procure.
Maybe about that.
Yeah, yeah, I have. Just the, I think the board has a realistic and the EDA, similarly, just with the hiring process, is a realistic idea of the difficulty in securing housing. And the flexibility while someone is starting in this role, we understand it's gonna be a hybrid situation at first because until you can find some, or if you're, it's not realistic to drive here. So the ability to find some more, you know, maybe during the week for a couple of nights or a night or something like that. The point is there's some flexibility while you're figuring out where you would want to land at.
Yeah, that's helpful because it's kind of a high pressure situation and, you know.
Well, when I, when I started, I was renting an Airbnb below our office, which is super convenient for you. For two nights to three days a week.
Don't stop in, he's wearing his pajamas.
Yeah, exactly. I coffee work from the kitchen below the office. But just as an example, the EDA director's doing the same thing. She's in South Metro right now is where she lives. So coming up for a couple of days a week to, you know, make those initial connections in the first few months has been important, was important for me until I figured out what over term, how I could.
And you can rest assured of our support as you try to find housing, you know, whatever you need, but. Fortunately, there are a few opportunities that are opening up this spring, weren't there before, fifty-one units up on the top of the hill. It's got a great view of Lake Superior. But no, the, the community has invested in, in helping you find some accommodations that'll work.
Yeah.
I would add more back to your first, first part of that question, but you can stop me if I'm out of line here, but there's, just speaking generically, how about you, where this position? Is that there is a syndrome in Cook County of people, and pretty much everybody wants to live here. Everybody, every doctor, every tourist.
Of course. But I mean it.
But there is sort of a, it's part of the local culture that when people make that move, they're sort of a, we'll see. And and it's for good reason because people do come and they're here for a while and they go because it's, you know, it's the reality is reality and not. Being on vacation is one thing, living and working in place is another thing. That might be part of it, but I just, I wanted to speak more to the sort of the culture and the community of that. I think it's partly Scandinavian tradition to maybe have it preserved. I don't know, but there's definitely that, that culture here. So just so you're aware of that. People want to see it. They want to see.
I know, I do have friends here who send me listings, you know, and I feel like anytime I, I'm like, ah, that's not really what we're looking for. They, I can feel them being like, oh, really?
Yeah.
Are you sure you're serious about?
Well, that's the other thing, that people who are shopping for real estate and they're like, wow, we're looking for a pink bathroom. It's like.
Yeah. Well, try picking out land with somebody who works in land acquisition. Very picky sometimes. Well, that's gonna be hard to do this and this and this. But yes, I totally.
I think just, just following my earlier comments, I think it's important that the, the dynamic between the ED and the board is one where, you know, once. We're decided, you know, I think our, our job is to really be, is kind of a catalytic role. How can we help you, you be more effective? And so, you know, in terms of, you know, hard and fast rules, by and large, you know, if you come forward with a well-thought plan. The headline is my effectiveness is gonna be, you know, is not compromised, but here's some changes and then, you know, the board's gonna be supportive and stuff like that.
Great. That's comforting. Thank you. I think I'll stop asking questions, but I appreciate all of your thoughtful answers for sure. That's really helpful.
Thanks for being there.
The county is good with the bathrooms, pink, it's whether it's in the house.
Yeah. I'm comfortable with that. Yeah.
So, Chair Gable, or maybe you want to take a minute to talk about next steps regarding the position?
The next steps, we will try to focus in on what, what candidate that's gonna meet our needs the best and then also check references. I, I hope you brought some references with you.
Yeah, I'll send you the email right after this.
I know that was an issue for you and we respect that, but.
They're busy, you know.
We'll be doing that and, and running a background check, a pretty straightforward background check and, and then staying in touch and, and try to, we'll try to negotiate a. Fair agreement with whoever it is and we need to get moving. So that's action. That's word number one of our values here. So. We mean it.
Yeah, I think you're setting records in terms of how quick ED search, like your turnaround is remarkable. So. Hopefully you get what you need out of it. Yeah.
But we do appreciate the fact that you put yourself forward the second time and then here you are. So thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for having me again.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to visit with all of us. I appreciate all your questions.
Yeah, and have a good day.
I'm staying here tonight. I was telling Ann, I got here and the snow started, so.